The Budget and Government Operations Committee. And I'm really happy today to kick off the mayor's press conference. When the mayor introduced her budget in August of this year, you know, I was thinking, oh, you know, this is going to be a pretty easy budget. And then when you get into the mix of having discussions with your colleagues, the members of the city council, things start to come up. People start to suggest different changes that they want to see in the budget. But at the end of the day, we have a budget that seeks to stabilize and keeps us on a good path of stabilizing our city finances while at the same time making a tremendous investment in the people of the city of Chicago. We have upped our support for mental health, for homelessness, for addressing and aging city fleet, for supporting our police officers, for reducing our debt and making our pension payments. And so I think that, you know, at the end of the day, even though, you know, if you use an analogy of going on a trip, which I used earlier today, you know, where you have different people on the bus, some people want to go in this direction, some people want to go in that direction. At the end of the day, we're going in the direction that's best for the city of Chicago. And so I am happy with the way the vote turned out today. I thank all of my colleagues. I thank the mayor for her leadership on, in this budget process. And I'm just going to step back and let her take over the show.
Actually, I think we're going to have Chairman Wiegas back next.
All right. We'll shift around again. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here. As you heard in the council meeting just now, this budget really invests in the city in a way that has never been done before. When we look over the last three years at what we've done with the finances of the city, what the mayor has shifted in terms of getting, doing away with scoop and toss, following through on that, we have a team of women running the finances of the city who are pretty incredible when you look nationwide at what other cities are doing. They've come up with plans that really put the city on a footing for having a solvent and strong budget for years to come. And on top of that, we've seen the rating agencies already give us these upgrades. When you heard what the mayor said about the first time in decades for some of these ratings going up, that is pretty incredible in terms of the finances of the city. What that boils down to is with our finances going in the right direction, we're going to be able to save funds so we can put them into more of the services that aldermen are asking for, that constituents and neighborhood organizations are asking for. So I'm not going to speak too long. I'm going to have, I think I'm handing it off to Mayor Lightfoot. I thought I was handing it off to Rob Castaneda, who, I'll let him speak in a second, but Mayor, if I could. He runs an organization for sports in some of the most difficult neighborhoods in this city, something that I did when I first started out. And bringing those kids to the table, making sure that they have something to do throughout the weekend and throughout the hours after school is pretty incredible. And I'm going to wait to hear from him, but these are the types of organizations that the mayor and her team and the aldermen have invested in that are really going to transform the way the city works. And I'm proud to have supported this budget today, and will continue to do this kind of effort with all these women here who are really the leaders of the city. Thank you. And Mayor Lightfoot, please jump in.
Thank you. I will keep my remarks relatively brief. I just want to thank everyone. Thank all those who supported the budget today. Thank all of the community leaders that came out today. They are doing the work. They're on the front lines, and our goal is to make sure that they have sufficient resources to be able to do the work to meet the needs of our residents, particularly those who are most vulnerable. As you know, earlier today, city council voted to pass the 2023 budget, which represents yet another down payment on our city's road to prosperity. More investments aimed at keep creating thriving and safe communities and the continuation of our good stewardship of taxpayer dollars. Through this newly passed budget, we will be able to continue delivering on the promises that we made to our residents, as well as enhance our ongoing efforts to create a Chicago that truly works for everyone in every zip code. Making this goal a reality is easier said than done, as we all know. And many of the people that are here with me have been out at this for years and years. But we've got to continue and make sure that we don't deviate from following our North Stars, of serving our residents and meeting their needs, and making sure that their live reality is reflected in the work that we do. As I said earlier, we can and we must provide pathways that lead our residents out of poverty and towards prosperity. We can and we must ensure that they have every opportunity to find and land good-paying, sustainable jobs in which they can pass wealth down to their children or start their own businesses. And we can and we must eradicate the systemic inequities that have prevented far too many of our residents from unlocking their full potential and that of their communities. Today, as public servants, we have recommitted ourselves to these all-important goals that are much closer to them becoming a reality because of the hard work that we have done in collaboration with each other over these last few years. And I'd like to thank each of the aldermen who voted for the budget in advancing those core commitments. And I want to thank all of our aldermen for taking the time to deliberate on the budget and ensure that we meet the needs of communities they represent and were heard from and addressed today. I'd also like to thank our residents. You've been through a lot over these last three and a half years, but we have survived and in many instances thrive because we have worked together. We have seen each other as neighbors, as brothers and sisters on the same path, same journey, with a common set of goals. And that is to live free, to live in a vibrant, safe neighborhood, and to make sure that we continue to do the hard work to make Chicago the greatest city on the planet. I'd like to also thank all of the constituents that were here, that weighed in through our whole budget process, that took the survey, that came to the Budget Town Halls. All of that participation in our democracy matters and had an impact on shaping this budget. Our work to create a better city, of course, doesn't stop after today's votes, but this is an important framework to move us forward. But our continued willingness to work with one another has gotten us through some incredibly difficult and challenging times over the last few years, and this is what will get us through as we keep taking big, bold steps on our journey. I'd like to now ask Rob Castaneda to come and say a few words. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been an honor to be here today. This is my first budget vote that I've ever witnessed in my life, and it's exciting, right? You know, it's like whether people were for it or against it, like the, I was inspired by, by everybody's passion, right? And it's like, this seems like a very, very hard time to be an elected official, right, in history, coming off of like pandemic and civil unrest and just everything, you know, now inflation, right? And so congratulations to the mayor and her team for having a budget that is strong enough to pass. And it's something that I'm so excited about that I'm here today to talk about it. And so, again, my name is Rob Castaneda. I'm the executive director and co-founder of Beyond the Ball. We're a sport-and-play-based youth and community development organization that operates on the west side of Chicago. And what we do at Beyond the Ball is we use sport and play to build community and reclaim public spaces from histories of violence. And so I'm here today not just as a leader of a nonprofit here in the city of Chicago. Growing up here, right, I remember being seven years old, a middle child, classic middle child, older brother who's three years older, younger sisters, two years younger. And my brother, when you're like seven years old and your brother's three years older, or three years older, that's, he's old enough to put you in headlocks, do stuff like that, right? And so like, while you love being with him, he's still always picking on you. But I remember being seven years old and walking to the corner store and gunfire like breaking out, and me hiding under the car, and my brother, he went somewhere else. And just like, you know, that being like the scariest couple of minutes, I don't even know how long it was, but I remember popping out of the car when I thought of him as safe and like looking around, where's my brother, where's my brother? When I saw him, that was probably the happiest I ever was to see my brother at seven years old. And then even again, in 1999, my wife and I, we bought our first house on the west side of Chicago in Little Village. And after reporting gang violence, our house was set on fire twice while we slept inside. Third time, windows broken out for reporting gang violence in our community. And I'm here today, right, to talk about how honored I am to present about the money, the dollars that are being allocated towards crime and violence reduction in this budget. As a, as a nonprofit on the west side, we are a delegate agency of DFSS, and over $20 million is in this budget for working with community organizations, community-based organizations, who are working to reduce violence and increase the quality of life for young people and families in our city. I've had the opportunity over the last year to work very closely with the Community Safety Coordination Center, which is a very intentional effort by the administration, by the city, to make sure that all city agencies are working together to reduce public violence. And working, you know, hand-in-hand with that agency, I can say that, you know, one of the things that I really appreciate about this budget is the innovation, the relying on best practices, relying on information, data that's out there. And so I'm really excited about what we're going to be doing as a city with this budget. I'm a learner. I like to learn. And one of my pandemic reads was The Infinite Game. And so in The Infinite Game, Simon Sinek talks about how, right, I'm a sports guy, I like basketball, right? When you play a regular game, you have a very finite beginning and end of the game. You know who won when the game is over. You know, when we talk about violence reduction, we talk about some of these larger issues that we have in society, it's an infinite game, right? I know it's not a game, but it has an infinite perspective. And so, you know, it's important that we are able to know when we're advancing the ball, right? Know when we're making progress. And I'm here today to say that in this budget, with the money that's being allocated for violence reduction in the city, this is a win. And so I want to take this time and mark that. And so thank you for your time, Mayor. Honored to be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you.
Excuse me. Now I'd like to introduce Jennifer Walling from the, she's the executive director of the Illinois Environmental Council.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thanks. Thank you, and good afternoon again. I am Jen Walling, the executive director of the Illinois Environmental Council. We're an organization that is a coalition of over 100 environmental organizations within Illinois, and I would like to move on that same theme that this budget is a win. The city of Chicago's budget for this year includes significant steps forward in staffing, resources, power, and responsibility for environmental protection, environmental justice, and climate projects at the city of Chicago, and we are so excited. Thank you to the mayor for her proposal to create an office of climate and environmental equity. We're especially grateful to Angela Tovar, the chief sustainability officer, and her role in implementing that. We're also grateful to the other persons that worked to make sure that we could double the resources available for this office. Chicago needs to lead the nation in securing just, affordable, community-based solutions to climate change, such as building decarbonization. We need to end sacrifice zones of pollution hotspots and ensure clean, lead-free drinking water. These are all things that we have done significant work on with Mayor Lightfoot, and we are excited about ending, heading towards the goal of achieving zero pollution in all of those areas. This budget moves us closer to being the leader our city should be in the nation on environmental protection. So thank you to the mayor and to the city council today.
Thank you.
And I'd like to introduce Cecilia Cuff.
Thank you, and thank you for having me here this afternoon. My name's Cecilia Cuff. I am the owner of Bronzeville Winery on Chicago's south side and the founder of the Nason Group. We recently were the recipient, Bronzeville Winery, of Invest Southwest Neighborhood Opportunity Funding, along with three other recipients in our quarter, as well as other recipients across the city. From the perspective of a small business owner and entrepreneur, every single dollar matters, and I'm sure that it's no different from the city of Chicago budget, besides a couple billion dollars. But from our pre-opening construction budgets to our annual operating budgets to even an employee payday advance, every single dollar means so much to a small business. From out, I'm sure that funding like the Invest Southwest Initiative has acted, like other businesses across Chicago, acting as a springboard to help create confidence in businesses and also banks to provide funding in those shuttered neighborhoods like we've found on in Chicago's south and west sides. I think without the Invest Southwest Initiative and the backing of the city of Chicago, it would have been very difficult for us as a small business to find funding and secure funding for a space that doesn't seem like it's investment-worthy. I can say that the Invest Southwest Initiative, the Southwest Invest Initiative in our city has in short order changed our perspective of how our own community looks at our own community. From being able to have a beautiful space where you can come together, dine, and come together as a community that looks beautiful, that makes you feel beautiful when you walk down the street every way, every day, to having a space in your community where you can make the same wage as you could in any other city without having to travel outside of your community. I think additionally, from the perspective of those guests who have traveled to Chicago south side from outside of Chicago as well, after reading about Bronzeville Winery in Architectural Digest magazines, in Hospitality Design magazines, and in the New York Times, we've had guests from all over the country and all over the world travel to Chicago south side, and that is something that I can say probably hasn't happened quite a bit in the past. And we're happy to be, we're happy that we, along with the Invest Southwest Initiative and investments, have been a catalyst for that. The Invest Southwest, for us, has been more than just an investment to help the corridor reopen. It's also had a last, it'll also have a lasting economic impact. In the short order of just six months, we were able to help to launch a career of a Chicago construction company that's black-owned from the south side. We've also created 43 new jobs, and we fed 21,000 guests. 2,000 of those guests have, we've been able to track, came from outside of Illinois to dine at Bronzeville Winery. And not only do they stop with us, they travel up and down the corridor in a place that's at 44th and Cottage Grove that they've probably not had on the map before. So for us, those are our small wins in just six, in just this six months, and we can only imagine what will come into the future. Additionally, every single day when we're able to have those impacts on our, on our community, and those are those one-on-one conversations of somebody being able to leave government assistance and saying, I want to take that step to be full-time because I want a career, to people who are able to become a sommelier and get a job downtown or travel the world or go to a vineyard, those are realities from a very real standpoint don't exist to people in specific neighborhoods. So for us, the Invest Southwest Initiative is more than just a financial investment. It's an investment in our community, and it's not just happening on the south side. It's happening across, it's happening across the city of Chicago. And while it all seems like a drop in the bucket, I think that my story echoes across the city of Chicago. And without the Invest Southwest Initiative and the funding, the hope, the development from the Department of Planning to figure out how do we create small businesses and provide that access and that education, I don't think it would be possible. But for us, I can say that I know there are stories across the city of Chicago that very much echo mine, and we're very appreciative to Mayor Lori Lightfoot, her vision, and the city of Chicago for supporting small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I also want to acknowledge two other members of the city council that are with us here today. Chairman Michelle Harris and also Chairman Emma Mitz. Chairman Mitz, I will tell you, I know you didn't intend to speak today, but I'm so glad you did. You just warmed my heart, and it made me feel like the work that we are doing is not in vain. So thank you.
I've been with the public, and I didn't speak today. I'm just, I'm just so excited. I have to share this with you. When Mayor Lightfoot came in and we were under the no cop academy syndrome that was moving throughout, I met with the candidates that was running for mayor. And point blank asked them would they support. I got a no. And Mayor Lightfoot came in, she said, I asked her the same question in the West Side elected officials meeting, and she said, I won't say I won't support it, but I think that it need to be more than just a public safety. That gave me a little hope. Because if you want more, I want more. The community want more. And out of working with that, the Boys and Girls Club wasn't on the tape at the time. It was through the mayor's effort and her initiative that the Boys and Girls Club be included, which is something we wanted from the very beginning under the prior administration, but it didn't happen. And now I can see the beauty, and I can see us bringing in more young peoples as policemen, firemen, paramedics, right off the west side. They can't be what they can't see. And they're looking at it now, and they are involved with it. They're helping to design, being a part of. It's a new hope for the community. Yes, I can smile. I have to smile. Because without a vision, people perish. And we had a vision, we stuck to it, and that vision is becoming a reality, and it's making a difference, and the change that never would have happened. I would tell you, on Chicago Avenue, we wouldn't have had that change had it not been for Mayor Lightfoot here, Invest Southwest coming along. That same area been sitting there all the time. Nothing was done under the 23 years I've been in. Couldn't get any help, and not because we didn't ask for it, we just couldn't get the help. Their attention wasn't there. Nobody saw that we were anybody that needed to be helped. But that's why I was really appreciative to my colleagues to let them know. I was patient. I waited. I wasn't going to move until we got that job done. And that's where I think all of them at now. We began to see we are Chicago in that works together, and that's what we should be. And if we're not, we need to get there. Because it works better when everybody do good together, we can deal with the crime. I remember when I was just hollering about crime in the city, and it fell on deaf ear on other parts of the city. It's like I was the only one having a murder every day, all day, two or three times a day, where I literally exhausted my energy. But now I see it all over this city. So now maybe we can do something about it. Because if it's not in my house, it'll be at your house the next day. Satan don't have no place who he picked to choose to deal with. He don't, he don't care who it is. He don't look at no color, no skin, no race, none of that stuff. How much money you got? None of that. He want us to do what's good and do what's right. And if we're going to work here in this city and be a model city for the rest of the world, we have to do things right. And that's all I'm asking for. So thank you, Mayor. I wanted to get that out, having shared it with the public, but I want to remind people we forget sometime. And we shouldn't forget about the work that's been put in and someone, somebody trying to help you, and then you don't give that appreciation back. So thank you. Thank you.
So I also want to make sure that I, I think you know everybody else who's here, but we also have with us our chief procurement officer, Eileen Velazquez, who does a lot of hard work behind the scenes. So with that, happy to take questions.
Thanks a lot, Mayor. Appreciate it. Members of the media, Amanda and I will bring in on the mic. We'll kick it off with Craig with two questions per reporter. Go ahead, Craig.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor, in a building where lopsided budget approvals have been the norm for decades, how disappointed are you, if at all, that this was closer than what we would consider traditional approval?
I have been saying to you and others who have asked that same question, I don't buy votes. And I manage to 26, which is the majority. So anything over 26, to me, is gravy. I'm extraordinarily happy with vote totals today.
How do you draw a line between buying votes and making compromises, which some, you know, of your critics are saying you didn't do enough of here?
Well, you heard a lot of talk today, and unfortunately, city council rules don't prevent fableism from being spoken on the city council's floor. But look, you, I'll take you back to the very beginning. I came into office with a massive, at that time, historic budget deficit. We closed that, that budget, and we passed it. Next year, even bigger because of the pandemic, $1.2 billion. We came together and we passed that budget and closed the budget deficit. Last year, had more money, but we're still, a lot of discussion about how to spend the federal dollars. And guess what? We passed another budget and closed any budget deficit. And today, number four, we've done exactly the same. So yeah, there's this narrative out there. Oh, Lightfoot's this, Lightfoot's that, and it should be more compromise, should be more collaboration. Well, what do you think we've been doing for the last four years? I don't just sit on the fifth floor and decide to reign over the kingdom of Chicago. We roll our sleeves up and we work hard together with members of the city council of goodwill. We work hard together with residents all across the city. We work hard with our not-for-profits and other civic leaders. There is a level of collaboration that is happening now, not decreeing by fiat, but working hard together to get to the right solution on behalf of our residents. And we've got a body of work over these last few years that put the lie to this notion that somehow we're not collaborative, somehow we're not doing the right thing. That's just nonsense. And in this election year, you're going to hear a lot more of it. You heard it a lot today, you're going to hear a lot more of it. But it doesn't make it the truth. The truth is found in the results and the facts. And the facts are, we have done more to reach our hands across every neighborhood of the city than any prior administration. You heard that today, and I'm very proud of that.
Thanks, Mayor. Heather, WTTW.
Hi, Mayor. There's a special meeting that's been called for November 14th to talk about bringing Chicago home, which would increase the graduated real estate transfer tax. Do you support putting that question to voters in February 20, on February 28th?
Well, let me say this. Obviously, as I said today, we've got to continue to do work to get people off the streets. There's no question about it. And the reasons for people being on the street are complicated. It's, I don't think anybody says, I'm going to live on the street, right? People are there for financial reasons, people are there because of job loss, but people are also there because they have mental health challenges. People are also there because they have addiction challenges, or some of all of the above. And I know that our teams, both the DFSS and others, work extraordinarily hard to do everything that we can to bring people into housing, whether it's rapid rehousing, whether it's transitional housing, whether it's low-barrier shelters or our historic shelters. We work hard every single day to make sure that the folks that are on the street have an off-ramp and options. And we put more money into this budget to continue to do that. So it's a, it's a question, I think, that everyone agrees on, which is, we need to continue doing more to fight for the homeless and to, and to give them the support and services that they need. One of the members of city council said it right today. It's not just about housing, it's about services, particularly for those folks that continue to be on the street, in encampments, under viaducts. It's a lot that needs to be done to meet them where they are, to gain their trust, and to convince them that there is a safer place for them. So the devil's obviously in the details. I'll reread the proposed language, but I do have some concerns about it. We've tried to work in collaboration, and I hope we'll actually be able to get something done.
Given that, in 2019, you campaigned in favor of exactly this proposal. What do you say to people who...
I don't think that's accurate, but go.
Well, you did support changing the real estate transfer tax.
Correct, but that's not the same thing as saying this proposal.
So you no longer support increasing the real estate transfer tax to...
No, Heather, please don't do that. That's not what I said.
I'm just trying to clarify.
What I've said is, we have to look at ways in which we can get to the end, and the devil's in the details. And as I said, we have tried and will continue to try to see if we can forge some common ground. I'm not eliminating that, but there's a lot more that I think we have to do to be able to get there and get to a place where I would feel comfortable, because no matter what, it's going to be spun as a property tax increase.
Erin Daly.
We have to do the right thing because it's the right thing to do, but the devil is in the details, and there are serious challenges with the proposal as currently written.
Erin Daly.
This is for Alderman Pat Dowell and any other alderman who wants to chime in. Alderman Viegas suggested that maybe there would be a day when the city council proposes its own budget and, you know, the mayor's office does its own, and you go to negotiations from there. As chair of the budget committee and an alderman, hoping to have an influence on the budget, is that something feasible for the city? And would, is it a better way to go?
I have no idea if it would be a better way to go. I mean, obviously, we have a role in the budget process. We vote... We vote on the budget. Alderman Viegas has not presented his idea. I mean, this is the first time I'm hearing this, so I cannot respond to the details. We're already involved in the budget, and really, it's a process of going back and forth between the legislative and the executive branch.
And for the mayor, applications close next week for the new 12th Ward Alderman. Do you expect to have someone chosen before Alderman Cardenas' last day on November 30th, or will you wait until after he leaves office to make that decision?
Look, it's going to be tight to do it before November 30th because of the timeframe, but we're going to work hard to make sure that the 12th Ward is represented and hopefully not have any gaps, but there may be a little bit of time between his departure and when a new alderman has been seated. But like we've done three other times this year, I want to make sure that we take the time that's necessary to give people enough time who are interested to apply, to have the committee have sufficient time to go through the applications, make a decision about who they're going to interview, and then present finalists to me. That's not a short process, and I don't want to shortcut it. I don't think that that would be, I think that would be doing a disservice to the 12th Ward. We need to follow the process.
Greg, Tribune.
Good afternoon, Mayor. The Sun-Times has a story about how Chicago Public Schools has been taking on more money than the city of Chicago traditionally pays. And it looks, one of the open questions going forward, especially for whoever the next mayor is, whether it's you or someone else, is how much financial support will the city provide to CPS after it moves to an elected school board? What are your thoughts on that?
Well, first of all, I fully intend to be the next mayor, and I fully intend to get reelected next year. Sorry to disappoint you. Look, there are significant financial entanglements between the city and CPS or always have been. And I think one of the things that we've got to continue to do is make the case to the legislature about those financial entanglements. They vote for an elected school board that essentially strips the city of Chicago from any role in governments, but didn't provide a dollar for CPS to be able to exist without the support from the city of Chicago. So there's more work to be done.
And then on the subject of the mayor's race, Congressman Garcia is expected to announce this week. He was up on the fifth floor today. He was outside taking photos and video. What are your thoughts on being challenged by a candidate who you yourself voted for in 2015, and what do you think of his challenge to you?
Well, what I think is, today is a day for me to celebrate the passage of our budget, because what it shows is that a mayor and a city council working together can do great things for our city. The politics will take care of themselves.
Alice, Tribune.
Hi, Mayor. Last week, you expressed reservations about pretrial release when asked about the Safety Act. To clarify, what specifically are you calling for to change? Should Democrats amend or repeal it? Should voters not retain certain judges?
I'm not sure I understand your question, because I've been talking about the dangers that we're seeing in the Cook County court system regarding pretrial release for a year and a half. It's not new. There are too many violent, dangerous people out on the street, period. And too many of them are getting released when they've got long rap sheets, when they are charged with very significant crimes of violence. And what I'm frustrated by, and I've expressed this, is that too many judges seem to ignore the requirement that already exists in state law way before the Safety Act, that community safety must be a consideration in their pretrial release determinations. We're not seeing that, and that's a problem. When we're still seeing in excess of 2,000 people charged with murder, attempted murder, kidnapping, carjacking, crimes of violence, using guns, and have significant criminal histories, getting out on the street through electronic monitoring, when the county has barely done anything more to make sure that there's actual community-based monitoring, that is a danger to us. That is them shirking their responsibility to provide safety to our residents, our neighborhoods in the city and in Cook County. I've been very, very clear about my opposition to what I see happening with too many Cook County judges who ignore the importance of community safety in making their pretrial release decision. So it's nothing new, not the first time I said it last week. I've been saying it consistently for 18 months, that the Cook County judges have to step up and recognize the victims and the witnesses that are out there, who live in fear of the people that they are letting back out onto the street with a mere ankle bracelet, who are not being monitored in a way that they need to and are continuing to commit crimes in our city.
And to follow up, how does that relate to your position on the Safety Act? Should it exist as it is now, or should Democrats look into amending it, given the dynamic you just described?
Well, I think that members of the General Assembly, particularly Senator Sims and Representative Klsotter, have been saying for some time that they are going to be making some changes to the Safety Act. We're in conversations with them about what we think needs to be done, and I expect something to get done, if not in a veto session, in a lame duck session, but I'm hoping something gets done relatively soon, because there are challenges there. Overall, I think the work of the Illinois Black Caucus and the variety of pillars, education and so forth, was noble work. But there clearly are changes that need to be made in the Safety Act, and you've heard from the governor and I think a number of legislators, that they are hard at work on that, and we're going to join them in that work.
A.D., Trip.
Hi, Mayor. Alderman Riley today referred to the CTA as a dumpster fire during his pre-vote speech.
You remember I mentioned this thing about fableism?
Sure.
Yeah.
When was the last time you rode the CTA, and what was your experience like?
I was last on the CTA about six weeks ago. I'm in the CTA stations with more frequency than that. I'm happy to say that we are making progress on violent crime. I don't have the numbers at my fingertips, but they are trending in the right direction. But again, we've got to make sure that our CTA is in fact safe and that we're communicating that effectively to the many residents in Chicagoland, not just in Chicago, that depend upon the CTA. I thought the comments today were, A, not grounded in facts, but also incredibly reckless and irresponsible. The CTA is really important to the life of our city. Make no mistake about it. And I've been very clear about the fact that the CTA has to step up and do more. They've got to talk more and have better collaboration with the various men and women who make the CTA work, the bus drivers, the train personnel, the mechanics, and everybody in between. They've got to do more to engage with the ridership, and sending out rider alerts is not good enough. So there's more that needs to be done, but I'm going to deal in facts and not hysteria and hyperbole.
And going back to the questions about the real estate transfer tax and paying for services for the homeless, what are the next steps for sustainable funding? Because that's been the biggest source of criticism of this budget, is long-term sustainable funding to address homelessness.
Well, look, I've heard that, and what I've heard is, oh, the money's going to run out. We've always made sure that we made, historically, way before I became mayor, we made sure that we had resources in place to service our homeless population, and we're going to continue to do that. And as I said, we should be working collaboratively, but that's been challenging to do. But I'm hoping and certainly leaving the door open to work collaboratively with those people who feel just as passionate as I do, that none of God's children should be living on the streets.
Erin Hyatt-Barker.
Hi, Mayor. When Alderwoman Lee was appointed to City Council, there was a press conference when she was introduced and took questions from the press. It was nice. That did not happen for the two other successive-appointed alderpersons. For Dr., excuse me, Alderman Cardenas' successor, will there be a press conference, some kind of announcement, and the ward or anything like that?
I think the most important thing is that we get it right, and we get somebody who reflects the community, that's lived in the community, and that people have confidence in. I can't tell you if there's going to be a press conference. Some of it is about timing, but the most important thing is to make sure that we get it right. And when I, there was a question earlier about will the successor be named before Alderman Cardenas leaves on November 30th? I can't tell you that, but we've got to get the process right. I think we've got a good process. I like the way that we are managing things, and I'm looking forward to meeting folks that want to be the next 12th Ward Alderman.
Justin Krantz.
Hi, Mayor. Just following up on Alice's question about, you know, you were somewhat broadly criticizing Cook County judges. Chief Judge Tim Evans is up for retention.
I wouldn't say broadly. I'd say pointedly.
I guess I mean not specific judges.
With a sense of urgency and passion.
Okay. Well, Chief Judge Tim Evans is up for retention. Do you believe voters should approve his retention?
I think that what the voters should do is educate themselves about who is making those pretrial decisions. That's what I did, and there's plenty of resources for people to be able to educate themselves about who the judges are. And I don't just mean the judges that make pretrial decisions. The judges in the court system are very important. They literally make the decision as to whether or not an aggrieved person gets redress, whether or not a business is able to succeed or fail. These are important decisions. They're at the end of the ballot. There's a lot of great resources for people to educate themselves. The Chicago Bar Association, all of the various ethnic and gender-based bar associations put out a guide. I rely upon the Chicago Council of Lawyers, an organization for whom I did judicial evaluations. There's a great, I think, guide by Injustice Watch as well. The most important thing is for people to educate themselves, to understand who's making what decisions, and then to cast their vote based upon having educated themselves. I can't sit here and tell someone what's important to them. You know what's important to you. But please, 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 educate yourself, and then obviously, we got to get people to vote. I'm pleased with, seems like the turnout this time around is higher than back in June. That's a good thing for our democracy.
I mean, politicians do endorse people all the time. Specifically, do you support Tim Evans' retention?
You know, I've made no secret about the fact that I have serious concerns about the way in which the court system run by Tim Evans is managing pretrial release. I've made no secret of that.
Mariah DeBeeze.
Hi, Mayor. Aldermen, including, you know, critics and allies of yours, stood up one after another today on the floor to call for a standalone Department of Environment. Obviously, this isn't the first time you're hearing about it. Do you think you underestimated the support for a standalone department in your last budget of this term? And why should voters give you another four years to stand that department up potentially when you promised to do that in your first term?
Well, running is not governing. And what I think Alderman Dial hit the nail on the head, and let me expound. There were some people who were literally just saying, "Yes, yes, yes. You've given us everything that we think is important to move this process forward, but just throw some vacancies on it and put a name over it that says 'department.'" That's not responsible governance. And so we worked very hard to get to common ground, but I'm responsible for the governance of city departments. I need to make sure that they have the resources that they need and that we're doing what's necessary to set them up for success. Slapping a heading on something and throwing some vacancies at it isn't responsible. I mean, I wouldn't have Jen Walling standing here today, and rightfully so. And there should be criticism, if we had agreed to do that, for political expediency. We have serious work to do to make sure that we continue to reclaim our rightful place as a leader on all things environment across the Great Lakes. And we've taken great, bold strides in doing that. You've heard the litany of things that we've done just this year, which are historic, never have been done before. Whether it's signing an agreement to get 70% of our renewable, of our energy needs from renewable sources, whether it's our decarbonization plan, whether it's our overall climate action plan, the things that we have done, taking bold steps to support our environmental justice work, climate change, there's no question whatsoever where my commitment, where our resolve is whatsoever. And I will continue to make that case to the voters. And I'm confident that when they learn the facts, they're going to be just as excited about the work that we've done and are doing as anyone else. We have to govern responsibly. We cannot ever just do the politically expedient thing to win votes on a budget. I won't ever do that. I won't ever support that. And I'm not going to support people who say, "Just throw a name on it, put some vacancies there, and let's call it a day, and then you get my vote." Frankly, that's offensive to me.
Can you explain Tamara Mahal's departure from the Community Safety Coordination Center and your plan for replacing her?
Yeah. Tamara has done a huge amount of work over the last two years. She was ground zero for heading up our COVID work, particularly our vaccination program. That was a seven-day-a-week night-and-day job. Then I asked her to take on another task, which is standing up our Community Safety Coordination Center, and she dove into that. Again, a seven-day-a-week night-and-day job. She came to me and said, "Mayor, I'm tired. I got to take care of myself, and I got to take care of my family. I'm always going to respect that. We have great leadership, and we build organizations not to depend upon a single leader. We build organizations to have great people who are able to do the work, who understand the mission, and that's exactly what we've done. Tamara left the CSCC in great shape, and I expect to be announcing a new leader in due course."
Thanks a lot, Mayor. That's wrap, everyone. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Just put this in the back of your mind, the CTA, the city of 22 hours, to hire delicate agencies, right? And like, safety and home services. And that comes up again.
I forgot about that. I forgot about that. Thank you.